I'd like to call this public hearing to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
President.
Mr. McAndrew?
President.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here.
The purpose of the public hearing is to hear testimony and discuss the following. File Council Number 93, 2021, appropriating funds for the expenses of the city government for the period commencing on the first day of January 2022 to and including December 31, 2022 by the adoption of the general city operating budget for the year 2022.
Thank you. The first speaker for tonight's public hearing on the 2022 budget is Joan Hodowanitz.
First, I'd like to say that the document that was in third order, the summary of the changes and corrections to the budget, was very impressively done. I think that a large effort went into correcting the shortcomings of the original October version of the budget. So I think the administration and the BA's office ought to be complimented on the attention to detail that that document reflected. And I think you could easily track, you know, the original and the various changes up until tonight.
That was created by the council, that document?
Well, I don't know who worked on the document, but it was well put together.
Okay, thank you.
So hopefully you won't have to have such a detailed document next year.
Agreed.
And hopefully there were a lot of lessons learned this year, which will save a lot of time and effort next year. There's not enough time in a five-minute comment to get into many specifics, but there was one comment I wanted to make. I read the article, this morning's paper, about the revamped budget that Jeff put together. And I have to agree with Mayor Cognetti one point. As I've been coming to council over the last few years, seems to me that two of the administration's biggest challenges were the audit and the budget. And when you look at the description of what the business administrator is required to do, among other things, he or she is overseeing the operations of IT, the treasurer's office, and human resources, HR. And that director has a tremendous span of control, which is feasible assuming that he or she has the right staff to assist him or her. And the mayor's intent to add a finance director, I think, is well considered. I would have done it. And I'm glad that she's not dropping the idea, is going to look for private funding. Because I think that a lot of the struggles that the city's had is not only preparing the audit and the budget, but overseeing all of the financial expenditures that the city makes year-round. And then being able to, you know, look for difficulties, make corrections, watch out for fraud, watch out for error, and all the things that must be done. I think that, looking back, we had to hire Rainey and Rainey to assist the BA's office in preparing for the audit alone, okay? The lateness of the audit is not the administration's fault. It's largely the way we allow the authorities to have a different financial year than what the city has, and therefore you must wait on their financial statements if they provide them at all. Keep in mind that the city has created authorities which are then not accountable to them. They go their own way. And those authorities are not even accountable to the voters. I think a financial director would be of great value in terms of relieving some of the pressure that we put on the business administrator because he has such a large span of control. So I hope that the mayor is successful in finding the right person and private funding to get that on board and to show that it can make a major difference in the way the city operates and the way the city manages its monies. That's her fiduciary responsibility, so I wish her luck in doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the 2022 budget?
Marie Schumacher. I too thought that your presentation was very easy to follow, but I would have liked to have seen things like the aging of the delinquencies for property tax and the trash fee. That would have been helpful. Without that, one and two are difficult to cheer for. But the thing that I'm really concerned about is the finance person. I think that is needed. It has been needed for a long time. I think we have to, I mean, there are a lot of unknowns out there and things that could change. Nonprofit growth of property is certainly one of them. The fact that the city has not done anything that I can see on the stormwater, I believe, is probably the number-one place that we could expect some lawsuits. And I didn't really see anything in here that, even professional services, that gave any attention to the stormwater, which I think is extremely important. And we don't know whether the real estate market is going to keep going the way it has. That'll affect a couple of the large items. And so I think, I don't know, I don't know where, Amoroso Sidekick, I believe his name was Evan something or other, I could be wrong, but he was a bright young man. I don't know if Amoroso picked him up here and hired him, or whether he's from New Jersey as well. But somebody of his ilk would be very helpful. And again, there are a few things that I think could happen in the future that could jeopardize this, but a good finance director would be very, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address counsel on the 2022 budget? If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This public hearing is adjourned. We will now have our council caucus. I'd like to call this public meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and also for those who have passed away recently in our community, especially Jerry Buckley and his family. Let us also take a moment of silence for all of the people in our community, in our country, and around the world who have passed away from the coronavirus. This pandemic has turned our world upside down, but we must remain hopeful and strong. We continue to pray for the doctors, nurses, researchers, and all medical professionals who seek to heal and help those affected, and who put themselves at risk in the process. May they have protection and peace. Whether we are home or abroad, surrounded by many people suffering from this illness are only a few, let us stick together, endure together, mourn together, and in place of our anxiety, let us have hope and peace. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
President.
Mr. McAndrew?
President.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here. There will be a motion this evening to move Item 68 to seventh order for a final vote. This is the ordinance which authorizes the naming of the Pocket Park at 248 Wyoming Avenue in honor of former Mayor Christopher Doherty. Anyone who would like to speak on this piece of legislation may do so in fourth order during citizens' participation. Councilman Schuster?
I'd like to make a motion to take from the table, file of Council Number 95 of 2021.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor in a second to take from the table, file of the Council Number 95, 2021. This ordinance authorizes the implementation of a payroll preparation tax. This piece was tabled last week in order to satisfy the public comment period. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
I'd like to make a motion to take from the table, file of Council Number 88 of 2021.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor in a second to take from the table, file of the Council Number 88, 2021. This piece is being taken from the table and placed in seventh order for a final vote. It is the contract with Bedrock Technology. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
And I would also like to make a motion to take from the table, file of Council Number 93 of 2021.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor in a second to take from the table, file of the Council Number 93, 2021. This piece is being taken from the table and placed in seventh order for a final vote. This is the 2022 city operating budget. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A, Minutes to the Scranton Municipal Recreation Authority Board of Directors Meeting Held November 4, 2021. 3B, Amendments to the City of Scranton 2022 General Operating Budget.
Do any council members have any comments on any of the third-order items? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have one quickly. The incoming council that will be seated in January will hold a public caucus this Thursday, December 16, at 5:00 p.m. in the Governor's Room to discuss reorganization.
Anyone else?
Yes, I have two that I wanted to mention. I think a couple weeks ago I had mentioned when we were having a vaccine clinic that the city was hosting. We are going to be having another one. It's going to be from 2:00 to 6:00 o'clock on December 28. And that will be at the Reserve Center on 1801 Pine Street. And that'll also be with Scranton Primary Health Center and the State Department of Health partnering with them. And you'll be able to receive Moderna, Pfizer, or the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine there for first, second shots, and boosters ages 16 and above, Pfizer for 5 and above, and flu vaccines will be there, too. So I know I've gotten my flu vaccine, and then I just got my booster last week, which I'm happy to say. So I just want to encourage the public to get your vaccinations as well. And then the second announcement that I had, Mr. Bob Bolus had requested if we could announce his annual Christmas dinner that will be taking place. That's going to be at St. Pat's on Jackson Street. And it will be from 12:00 to 6:00 p.m. And I believe that's on Christmas Day that he hosts it. They'll be doing takeouts and deliveries. They're looking for volunteers as well. If you want to request the takeout or delivery, you could call 570-346-7649. And that's all. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, I have a couple announcements. It is with a heavy heart that I announce the passing of two great retired Scranton firefighter fighters that were very close friends of the family. Neil McDonald served the city for 28 years and retired as a captain. And Robert Herke Durkin, a very dear friend that was a larger-than-life person. Herke served the city 35 years, starting as a police officer, and retired as a fire inspector. My heart, thoughts, and prayers go out to the families of these two proud firefighters. Secondly, I'd like to announce the Ninth Annual McAndrew Family Cookies for Kids Cancer Bake Sale Event. With safety always being a top priority, we've decided that this year we can host an actual in-person bake sale. So like last year, we did a virtual cookie chain. And for those of you who are new, the cookie chain is a way for the bake sale event to live on and continue our mission. So if you're not a baker, you can simply donate to our fundraising page on Facebook. And due to the recent passing of a dear friend and strong supporter of Cookies for Kids Cancer, we would like to dedicate this year's donation in memory of Mark O'Malley. Mark never missed a cookie event or any opportunity to support his friends and community. So when you submit your kid's donation this year to Cookies for Kids Cancer, please keep his giving and generous spirit in mind. With that said, I would like to say how very proud I am of my family, my students, and our generous community. Over the past nine years, we have raised $60,000 for less toxic drugs as treatment for the brave children with this horrific disease. And also, the police department, they're having three upcoming events that will be put on by the Scranton Police Department. Wednesday, December 15, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., there'll be a Scranton Police Meet and Greet, second floor of the marketplace at Steamtown. Then Thursday, December 16, there'll be a car seat safety check at Toyota of Scranton on 3,400 North Main Avenue from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. You can have your child's car seat checked, and also a chance to win a gift card from a local business. And then Thursday, the 21st, beginning at 4:00 p.m., Santa will be joining members of the Scranton Police Department to spread holiday cheer. Check the official Scranton Police Department Facebook page, which is Be Part of the Solution for all the times and the stops that they'll be having. And then lastly, Saturday, December 25, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., the Backyard Ale House will have free Christmas breakfast. There'll be free takeout of breakfast along with new or gently-used clothing for children and adults, also toys and non-perishable food items. This event is open to all, but especially those who are alone and are in need of a little extra cheer on Christmas. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I just want to thank Mark and his family, too, for the work that they do with the charity that he just mentioned. It's a wonderful thing, and I don't think Councilman McAndrew also gets enough credit for the Hometown Heroes banner program that was really started under his direction, so I want to thank him for that. Mr. Volenberg?
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
The first speaker tonight is Joan Hodowanitz.
Joan Hodowanitz, Scranton. Okay, what's the story on the audit this week?
We don't have it.
Oh. And it looks like since there's nothing in legislation with regard to the new union contracts, it looks like we're at the end of the year without any legislation with regards to that. And those contracts are going to expire on December 31. So it shall be an interesting January. And we're still looking for the missing documents for the firefighters to be posted to the city's website, but I've only been asking since June, so I'll give you a little time.
I've been asking just as much as you ask.
Yep. With regard to Item 6A, the Pocket Park being named after Mayor Doherty. And I don't think a lot about Mayor Doherty. He's neither here nor there in my mind. But I don't see him as being such an outstanding mayor overall to be warranted this kind of recognition. After all, he was the mayor on whose watch we had the double pension scandal. But above and beyond that, it annoys me that after the brouhaha above Biden Street, apparently didn't occur to anybody to solicit citizen input on who we might honor with the name of that park. I have four names that came to mind tonight. Tony Santoli, Bernie McGurll, Captain Robson, who died fighting a fire, and Officer John Wilding, who died pursuing criminals. There's four people who have served the city year after year, two of whom gave their lives for this city. Four people who would deserve such an honor. And I'm sorry, but I just don't think because he was the mayor and what he did for parks and recreations entitles him to that kind of recognition. And you heard, week after week, how people were distressed that we were renaming Spruce Street and the expressway after President Biden, after many people thought that was inappropriate. Was there any attempt to ask for citizen input on this naming?
No, there was not.
Well, shame on you. Shame on you. You should have done that. I know you're going to pass this resolution, and so be it. But when we have citizens like Santoli, McGurll, Robson, and Wilding, how we could overlook them?
But, Ms. Hodowanitz, we didn't overlook anyone. And I explained why we were doing this last week, which, and I don't want to take your time up, but you're combining two things that Mayor Doherty was known for. That's the revitalization of the downtown, downtown living. There would be no park, there'd be no reason for a green space downtown if it were not for his vision and his commitment to the park system. So it's not as if we said, geez, let's name this after this person or that person. There was a definitive reason why we did it. So it's not like we said, well, this person's better than that person. That's not, you know...
I disagree with your rationale on this. I'm not even sure we needed a Pocket Park on that corner. I think we ended up with a Pocket Park because there was nothing we could do with that piece of property, considering the amount of contamination that was there. But be that as it may, should there ever be an opportunity to name something else, I recommend, one, you solicit citizen input, and, two, you look beyond politicians. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jack White.
Hi, council. I hope you're enjoying the peace, solitude, and darkness on these days of Advent, leading up to the season of light on December 21, when our days start getting longer. I took pictures, I talked about Lake Music Street last time I was here, and the ditch due to erosion on the south side of the road, I guess, all the way, the whole block. Deep, deep ruts. I suggested gravel to fill it in, which, again, is a day's work with city DPW supplies of gravel. Easy fix. But I was over there today, I took more pictures. There are a bunch of pylons lined up, lots of them, 15 or 20. Somebody's listening. Somebody's listening. Coincidentally, a few days before that, I got a note in my mailbox, and it said, "If city government won't do it, we will." And it was signed, look, phone number's there, and it was signed, Saul Alinsky. I don't know if any of you are familiar with Saul Alinsky. He's a change agent. Talks about a cooperative method, procedure for change, cooperative, and if that don't work, conflict. So Saul Alinsky is no longer with us, but as a social worker and organizer, I was thrilled. I was thrilled because somewhere he's alive and well. So anyway, I did take pictures, but I forgot them, left them home. And while I was there, an older woman, a kind of tiny woman, was walking her tiny dog. And he slipped and went into a rut. He got startled, here she, jumped out, which startled the woman, and she went down. She didn't get, well, her hands and knees were scraped. Fortunately, she got her hands out in time. It could have been her head. So anyway, the pylons are there. They look good. They're a little bit safer, a little bit safer, but if you don't know that area, it's pretty dangerous. I think she may have hurt her ankle. I offered a ride. No, thank you. Her and her dog, no, thank you. Lovely, lovely woman. So anyway, I'll bring the pictures next time. Again, I hope you have the peace of the season in your heart and your soul, and I hope you can attend to some of these smaller neighborhood things. The neighbors, there's a nice little hamlet that's on Harrison where it meets Music. A little hamlet, that's really kind of nice. But a few months ago, it wasn't. Garbage was piling up in this beautiful entryway to Scranton in the Hill Section. And I talked to Dr. Bob, who lives right on the corner, and I said, you know, you reckon it here. And he said, it's not me, it's them, it's not them. And so I talked to a couple of them. It's not me, it's him, it's her, it's Dr. Bob. The garbage was two months. We ended up hauling it away, a lot of it to where I put my garbage. It's so nice now. We got together, we had meetings, we talked, and there was misunderstandings and conflict. Now, Christmas decorations, people are chatting it up, they're shoveling each other's sidewalks. It's beautiful. So anytime you want, get a yellow vest, come on over, we've got stuff to do. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
I have a standing meeting every Tuesday after this, so I'll be leaving.
Thank you. Thanks for letting us know. Have a good night. Next speaker is Les Spindler.
Evening, Councilor Les Spindler, city resident, homeowner, taxpayer. Last week, Councilman Gahn, during your comments, you were praising Mayor Doherty for the great job he did with the parks, and how nice parks bring people into the city. It sounded really familiar to me. It sounded like when Chris Doherty was in office, all the puppeteers in the city council, they said the exact same thing. And nobody came into the city. Because nobody wants to come into a city that has nice parks. People want to come into a city that has jobs. And under Chris Doherty, we lost over 3,000 jobs. That's why nobody came into the city. I could just see people wanting to move here. I'd say, oh, let's move into Scranton. We won't have a job, but we'll be able to sit in the park and feed the pigeons. That's not happening. It's ridiculous for people to think that parks are going to bring people into the city. And Neyad Park, you said it was a jewel. Well, compared to when I was growing up, right now, Neyad Park is like a rock, not a jewel. It was a jewel when I was growing up. There was stuff to do up there. There was the zoo, which none of you were around when that happened, when we were at the zoo. There was an arcade. There were rides. There were dodgems in the arcade. There was tons of stuff to do up Neyad Park. What could you do up there now? Go up there and sit on the park bench? Go up there and sit on the park bench or walk around? Believe me, it is not a jewel, and Chris Doherty had nothing to do with it. And he should not be, have a park named after him. I agree with Joan 100%. The four people she mentioned are awesome people. At least Jimmy Robeson has a street going into the Isaac Tripp School named after him. There are much many, many more people qualified of the park named after him than Chris Doherty. Like I said last week, he cost us $40 million and almost bankrupted the city. Next thing, I read in the paper today about the changes you made with the budget, but what I didn't read was how you helped the citizens of this city. None of that stuff you did helped the taxpayers of this city. Didn't lower our taxes, didn't lower the garbage tax or get rid of it altogether. You people run on a promise that you're going to help the taxpayers, but you get into office and you don't do it. It's just lie after lie after lie. And going back to the park, any of you to vote to pass this legislation, you'll never see my support in an election again. And I supported some of you, and I cannot support anybody that supports Chris Doherty because he almost killed this city. But once again, like I said, I've been coming to these meetings a long time, and you're not the only council. Taxpayers don't get any help from you people, and you're supposed to be working for us, but it seems like you're just working for yourselves. Lastly, when you're coming off the Biden Expressway into the city to turn onto Madison Avenue, as soon as you make the right to hit Madison Avenue, there's an abandoned car there. There's no license plate on it. It's been there for over a month. I stopped to look the other day, there's a tag under the windshield wiper, and it says abandoned vehicle. I don't know if the police put that there or whatever, but it's been there, as the lady said, it's been there for well over a month, no license plate, and it's tagged as an abandoned vehicle. I don't know why it's still there. I said, it's right on Madison Avenue as soon as you make the turn off the Expressway. Maybe they get towed out of there. It's a silver Toyota Camry, because it's, to me, it's turning into an Isor. Well, that's all I have tonight. Want to wish everybody happy holidays, and we'll see you next year.
Thank you. Next speaker is Lee Morgan.
Lee Morgan. Listening to Les speak tonight is just one more reason why the Home Rule Charter, the Home Rule Charter needs to be reviewed and rewritten, not just for the city, but maybe also for the county. Because city government really hasn't worked for the residents, and I've been going to these council meetings long, over 30 years, and we've just, it's just terrible where we are. And when we start talking about naming a city park after Chris Doherty, it gets a little ridiculous. It's not quite as bad as naming anything after Joseph Biden, but it's close. You know, you got to take a look at what this gentleman did. He built the pool house at Naug. The cost was just horrendous, okay? But he didn't maintain the pool. He pushed the city into Act 47. He built the parking garage and said, and the council was seated at the time, if you read the minutes, said that the city could in no way afford that parking garage. But he built it anyhow. But he said, look at the skyline, because when's the last time you saw a crane over the city of Scranton? He monetized city assets and borrowed against them. He worked with the former Governor Randell to break municipal unions and almost bankrupted the city in the process. At the time, there were city employees coming here. He was offering them double pensions to retire. Well, the union was pushing it. Take it. The money's there, take it. If he's going to give you it. I was here for all this stuff. Well, they did, and in the end, you saw how that turned out, all right? They got stripped of it all. He spent millions of dollars in Naug Park. He was going to restore the pride. This man was going to restore the pride and Scrantonians' pride of the city. Okay? Because, well, I don't know. He used licensing and inspections as a weapon. The city was sued over it. I think they lost. I mean, this is why the residents in this city need to review the Home Rule Charter. We need to, and look, I don't expect the Scrantonians to write anything that's said here, but we don't need them to write anything. The residents in this city have to realize one thing. After being in distress for over 30 years, what's the city really look like coming out the other end? I think, just my personal opinion, that when former mayor Courtwright was prosecuted, there should have been investigations into the sale of the Scranton Sewer Authority, of its reserve fund, where that money went to, and the privatization of the Scranton Parking Authority, and also giving one of those structures away and then giving a million dollars to the person who then was going to own it. I think Scranton, in my own opinion, has been a hotbed of corruption for my whole lifetime. And I think that the residents, they don't want to face the reality that the government we have just doesn't work. And it's time to really realize that this isn't working, and we can write a charter and control every single thing of where the grant money goes, everything that this council can do. We can build parameters around everything. And we can write it like the legislation the council writes, so that if one part of it is found to be illegal, it doesn't set aside the whole document. Because really, naming that park after Mr. Doherty is an injustice to the residents of Scranton. It's like what the Lace Curtain Irish did to the Shannie Irish in Ireland. Two sets of laws, two sets of rules. And that's what we've got to realize. And if you want to name a park after somebody that's a Scrantonian that deserves it, name it after Mark Walsh. Do your own research. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address council tonight?
I'd like to start tonight with asking if anybody knows why we've had so many rebidings? I don't...
Well, I mean, because people aren't bidding on it. People aren't bidding on these RFPs or RFQs. That's why they would...
They're not bidding?
Well, the reason that you would re-bid is because no one bid on it.
Okay. Well...
Either that, or someone bid and they had to throw the bid out because they didn't provide the correct specifications.
Because there have been a lot, and those are not cheap to put in the paper over and over and over. Okay. Well, has anybody ever talked to anybody about that, though? I mean, are they just don't want to work with Scranton, or they don't want the jobs? I don't know. It just seems strange. All of a sudden, there's so many rebids. Okay, moving on then, can anybody tell me the status of the demolition of that garage in the 1700 block of Wyoming Avenue? Is it gone?
I don't have an update. I believe it's still standing. I think we covered this last week, but there's a dispute between the gentleman that owns the garage and the city at this point.
I thought they had a meeting this week.
They had a meeting on Tuesday, but as far as I know, the dispute is still not resolved, and the garage is still standing.
Regarding the pocket park, I've noticed since about, I don't know, late spring, early summer, nothing has changed there. And I don't understand why it hasn't moved along more than it has. Has DEP given us a, whatever they do certify, that it's clean?
The final update...
Or is there a problem? I'm sorry.
The final update, the last update I received was that it would be completed in the summer of next year, and everything was moving along. So you may not see, there was some work that has been done there, a lot of work being done, probably in the spring. You'll see things start to pick up.
Okay. And what about even Scranton tomorrow? They used to come in on a quarterly basis? Have they been in lately?
They'll come in next year. Yeah, they, we were supposed to schedule something, but there was conflicts between their schedule and our schedule. Plus, we had all the budget work sessions, which I thought was more important.
Yeah. What about the Chamber? I mean, it just does not nice things to me when I go by and I get stopped at that traffic signal, and I see that same old thing. Work in Scranton, 10 years, no taxes. That's just a lie. How do we allow that? They're our marketer. That's scary in and of itself. They're the Lerdah marketer.
We have no control. Councilman Donahue, I know, talked to, I think, Bob Durkin previously.
Yeah, I thought we, but I'm sorry, I completely forgot about your request from last week, but I'll reach out to him again and have an update for you.
How are they doing on the Lerdahs? Have we had any...
I mean, yeah, we had that discussion with them last year, and they said they were going to take it down. So I don't know why it's back up, but I will find that out for you. I apologize for not getting that this week.
Okay. What about Sorento? I didn't see anything in the budget about Sorento. Is that still a police project?
Yeah, it's mostly being funded through grants. They did give us an update. I thought we put it in third order within the last few weeks, but they gave us a breakdown of the costs, what they plan on doing, and how they've spent the money so far.
Okay. And Joan, when Joan brought up Wilding's name, it reminded me, because a couple of years ago, I checked the code to see, because after he had that fall, there was going to be a code change requiring fencing when you had downward steps, that somebody could do that. And I don't think that ever happened.
I'd have to go back and look.
And I think that would be a great thing to do, though.
Yeah, I agree.
If it happened once, it could happen again, and I think... So, okay, I'm about out of time, and Merry Christmas to all, and a good 22.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address council this evening?
I'm going to drum on that no taxes. What is that all about?
I'm sorry, what?
That there's no taxes come to Scranton, don't pay taxes for 10 years?
Yeah, no, I don't know why they framed it that way. What, the whole purpose of the citywide Lerdah was a few years ago was to try to spur construction for people who live in the city or businesses who are looking to relocate to the city. So you would get a 10-year exemption on city, county, and property, school taxes, just for the improvement. You would only pay on the land for 10 years. I mean, we've seen a little bit of success with it, but not to the degree that I think we would have thought.
Yeah, you're still paying something. You're just not paying on any improvement.
How about wage taxes and so forth?
No, everything else is still normal.
Still the same.
I mean, I suppose it's okay, but my only message is if you don't want to join the community and pay your dues, please don't come. You know, we don't need you. We have enough, 36% tax exempt. I've been drumming about that for years, you know? And I'd love to reconstitute the taxpayers strictly on Scranton issues. In other words, exclusive, and start figuring out ways to get into the courts over this because it's excessive. It's totally excessive. I have a house next to me, went for $2,000 or $3,000 in back taxes. The landlord's now charging $1,300 a month, and it's a shack, you know? They did some improvements, but it's a shack. Once again, as our audit in, I apologize, I came a little late. The general audit is still not...
Most of the audit, the audit's pretty much complete. We're waiting on the authorities to get their audit in. Just the sewer authority, there's a problem with that. If we were to issue it, or the city were to issue it at this point, they'd have an adverse opinion because they would not have included that.
I think if they don't have it in by May 30th, that's the date, they should be given a two-month notice that their job no longer exists, at least by August 1st, you know? One of the things I heard, maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm right, the sewer authority. And I mean, this guy was in here drumming council, three councils ago, about what a great idea it would be to do all this with the sewer. My water bill is twice as much. The one thing I'll always remember you for, you called it a backdoor tax, and that's what it is. It's about 600 more dollars a year I'm spending on water than what I used to. I understand upgrades were needed to be done, but the upgrades, if you really thought of how many houses we serviced in it with Scranton and Dunmore with the sewer authority, it might not have been anywhere near that much every month, you know? Went from about $55 to 100, 110. It's like, talk about inflation, you know? Well, last weekend, we reached a milestone of 800,000 people dead. And by the way, I don't know if it's that way today, if somebody's found dead in their home, the little old lady or whoever. They're not, they weren't being tested for COVID. They were not being tested. So we might be out a million right now as we speak. Nobody was tested. If it was considered a waste of a test kit to test somebody that was already deceased. And it's really a shame, and I'd like to thank all of the anti-vaxxers and the people spreading this information. It's just a shame because, guess what, gang? I resent you, and it's starting to be borderline on a hate word, because you're liars, you're stealing people's last breath. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Goes for any anti-vaxxer with their misinformation.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address council? Mr. Volmerd?
This is ordered. 5A motions.
Councilman Schuster, do you have any motions or comments this evening?
Just one comment I'd like to make is, I'd like to thank President Gahan and Solicitor Hayes for their service to the city of Scranton. In my time here on council, it's been a pleasure to work with both of them, and I know they'll be missed, and I wish them the best of luck in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, or next speaker, I'm sorry.
I didn't sign in.
Councilman McCandor, any motions or comments?
Thank you. I'd like to echo the same sentiments as Mr. Schuster. It's been a pleasure and an honor to sit next to you for almost two years. I'm very proud of you. You've always been a force of the residents. And Kevin, it's been awesome, been awesome working with you. Your eye for detail, your support and wisdom has been well-received by council. I also have a couple, brought to my attention by some concerned citizens, some complaints. So on the corner of Ash and Capouse, and I think we had a problem there before, there are tires that are stacking tires on the sidewalks. are tires that are, they're stacking tires on the sidewalks. So, it's right across the street from John Adams School. So, Mr. Volenberg, take a, you know, if you can inquire about that. I think it's been an issue before, I think it continues, so if you could look into that. And then also, I have another concern brought up by a citizen, and it's a really weird one. It's on 436 8th Avenue in West Scranton. It was a vacant lot that was purchased, I don't, I'm not sure when, a few years back is what I'm told, and it wasn't purchased, like, say, by a neighbor buying a lot next door, but there's a camper on it. And it's very suspicious activity they believe is going on there. The lot is overgrown, it's like a jungle. There's a car, so it looks like someone's either living in this camper or doing stuff inside this camper. So it's kind of tucked away, it's hidden by Price, hidden behind Price Right on Luzerne Street. It's a weird little area to find, but I did take a ride by, and it does look, like, it doesn't look right. So, I mean, there's, and there's like a light blinking on the camper, on the exterior of the camper, so if you can please inquire about that. And that is all I have.
Thank you very much. Dr. Rothschild, any motions or comments this evening?
I want to echo the sentiments. I also have really appreciated working with Solicitor Hayes, as well as Councilman Gahan. It's just, it's been a pleasure. I've learned a lot from the both of them. I've appreciated having them here, and I wish them best of luck in the, in the future. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Donahue, any motions or comments this evening?
I'm going to save most of my comments for budget items, but I just want to wish everyone a happy holidays, Happy New Year, and I'll save my praise for both President Gahan and Solicitor Hayes for January 3rd.
Are you sure? You don't want to do it now?
No, I'll do it then.
Okay. This is a great meeting, everybody's giving thanks. So this, my last official meeting, as was mentioned, will be Monday, January 3rd, when the new council gets sworn in, but tonight is my last actual council meeting with any business on the agenda, so I wanted to take a brief moment to say a few words. I know we have a long meeting in front of us with all the amendments, but after eight years, I do need to say a few things. The first thing is, I want to thank my colleagues who sit up here with me, Dr. Rothschild, Councilman Donahue, Councilman McAndrew, and Councilman Schuster. It's been a pleasure working with all of you. As they all know, this is sometimes a thankless job, and I know that the hard work that they all put in, and not only the fact that they're my colleagues, but when you sit up here with people every Tuesday, once a week, you become friends with them, you get to know their families. So that's been really important to me, and it's been nice to get to know them and their children and their families. So I want to thank them for all the hard work and their dedication to the city of Scranton. You can say what you want about any council member, present or past, but there's one thing that has been a constant, at least in my mind, and that is that people really do care about the city, whether you agree with the vote that they took or a stance that they have taken tonight or anytime in the past, they do really care about the city. I've worked with a lot of council people over the years, Jack Loscom, Bob McGough, God rest his soul, Joe Wexler, Pat Rogan, Mary Walsh Dempsey, Wayne Evans, and Tim Perry. I want to thank them, it was a pleasure working with them as well. I want to thank our city clerk Frank Volenberg. I said earlier this evening, this man has ice in his veins, nothing phases this guy. He's been a really great addition to our staff, wonderful, outside of the fact that he's a good city clerk, he's a wonderful person, and he's a gentleman's gentleman. Everyone in this building has a lot of respect for him, because he, he's truly a good person. And Frank, I want to thank you for the work that you've done, it's been great working with you. I also want to thank our former city clerk Lori Reed. Obviously, she's no longer with us in the building, but I still keep in contact with her. She was also wonderful to work with. We got our start a number of years ago in City Hall. I got to meet her when I worked in OECD, and got to know her very well and her family, and she was just an outstanding clerk and an outstanding person. I also want to thank our council solicitor Kevin Hayes, this is his last meeting as well. As everyone mentioned, you know, Kevin is an ethical person, he is a person who, I don't know how he works the hours he does, he literally does not stop working. He cares deeply about the city, he has a deep commitment to Scranton, and I just want to thank him. It's not an easy job that he's in either, and he's really gone above and beyond with the work that he's done. So thank you very much, Kevin, for all that you've done here. And again, just as I stated earlier, you get to know all these people, and Kevin and I, over the course of the last few years, have become friends, because he's, also happens to be a wonderful person, and he has a wonderful family. I want to thank Kathy Carrera, who works in our office. Kathy has done a phenomenal job. Again, some of the people like Kathy and Allison, who sits here, who's also done a great job, started last April. People don't see the things that they do, they make this all work for us, and they put all the items together for us and do a lot of the things behind the scenes, and they just do a great job, and they truly care about the city. I want to take a second and also thank my family. I'll do this again on the 3rd, so this, but, you know, I was very, very lucky to have the full force of my family behind every campaign, well, I ran two campaigns. If it wasn't for them, I would have never been elected. You really do, in a city our size, with the amount of neighborhoods we have and the ground you have to cover, you need a strong family support behind you. So, of course, I want to thank my wife Kelly. She was just phenomenal over the last eight years in terms of, you know, raising our children, taking care of our children. I'm in and out all the time with meetings and everything else, and she's just done a great job and has been very supportive. My children, Jack, Murphy, Maeve, and Mary, it's funny, we had Jack in 2015, so I've had four children over the course of my tenure on council, so a lot of memories here. Want to thank my mother, Marie, and my father, Jack. If I told them I was moving to Alaska tomorrow, they would say, okay, here's gas money, and where, you know, tell us what you want to do. They have just been a sounding board for me ever since I was a little kid. They've just, great. They always say that they're proud, they're proud of me, but I'm proud of them, they're wonderful parents. My brother Eddie and Jackie, my sisters Katie and Kelly, always helped out and worked on my campaign, and I want to thank them, they've been, they've been great. I have the unique, a unique family in the fact that I have a lot of aunts and uncles, so, and they've, if it wasn't for them, I could have never been here, because they've literally worked on my campaign 24/7. My aunt Anne, Peggy, Kathy, Pat, Maureen, Linda, and Benita, my uncles Jerry, John, and Billy, they were the nucleus of my campaign every time I ran, took me around door-to-door, they did a great job. My uncle Billy and Jim Gahan, always big supporters of mine. All of my cousins, we'd be here for another five hours if I was to go through all of them, but they, they were wonderful. And one of the great highlights for me to be on this council was the fact that my grandmother, Helen Trentley, who her father stood at that podium in the 30s and 40s, ran for council, sheriff, big into politics, she got to see me take office before she passed away. And she was a big force behind my campaign. That's how I really got involved in politics, was watching how she handled herself with such grace. And my grandfather Edward Trentley, my grandparents Elizabeth and William Gahn. So my entire family has been phenomenal. Eight years up here has gone by very quickly, in the blink of an eye. When people say, "Time goes by fast," wow, does it ever. It seems like yesterday that I was sitting next to my friend, former council president Bob McGough, talking about the issues facing the city at that time in 2014. Many things have changed on and off over the last eight years, except you, the people of our city. It's been an honor and a privilege to represent you in these chambers. And I've always said since I was in grade school that I wanted to help people when I got older, and this is the perfect job to do that. There would have been no other position that would have afforded me the opportunity to meet so many wonderful people throughout every corner of the city of Scranton. I've sat across the kitchen table from many of you, listened to your stories, your struggles, and I've realized time and time again that what makes this city great, what makes this job worth it, what makes it worth it to come here every Tuesday and spend all the hours that we do, is you. This is what makes the job special. And I only hope that my time here as a councilman, and it could be an example to my children, Jack, Murphy, Maeve, and Mary, that this city is worth fighting for. Public service, being involved in the community in any way is important, and I truly believe, and I've said this before, that it is an obligation that we all have, and it's in our blood. It's not easy, it's not for the faint of heart, but nothing worth having, as we all know, comes easy. And when my ancestors left County Mayo, Ireland, and stepped foot in the city like many of your ancestors did, they built the city from the ground up with hard work and a belief that we can always do better. And I will always believe that our best days here in Scranton are ahead of us, and I look forward to continuing to be involved in public service in some way in the future. And again, I want to thank all of you for all of your support, and it's been an absolute honor and a privilege to work on your behalf. Thank you. Mr. Volenberg?
5B, no business at this time. Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file the council number 106, 2021, and ordinance, authorizing the naming of a new pocket park located at 248 Wyoming Avenue in honor of former mayor Christopher A. Doherty.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6A pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? On the question, contrary to some speakers tonight, I have received many phone calls and messages in support of this measure from people who recognize the impact that Mayor Doherty has had on our city, especially our park system and our downtown. As I mentioned last week, since 1866, the city's incorporation, we've had dozens and dozens of mayors, and each one of them, good or bad, has made their impact on the city. No matter what you think about Chris Doherty, positive or negative, there is no doubt, no doubt, that he has made his mark on this city in terms of a lot of things, but especially our park system and our downtown. I have four little children. When you move, want to move into a city, you look at a few things, one of them being a park system. I lived across the street from a park for seven years, and when that park was rehabbed, boy, did it make a difference in our neighborhood. I started to see people that I did not see before, who were coming to enjoy the city of Scranton. So yes, it does matter. Each mayor makes an impact, each council member in some form or fashion, whether you like them or don't like them, they make an impact. Chris Doherty had an enormous, enormous impact in our city in terms of the parks and the downtown. So, for those reasons, I am going to support this. I did support this last week. It's a good thing for the city of Scranton, and when you have a very positive effect on your community, you deserve to be honored. There have been many mayors in the past in the city who have been honored with park, naming a park after them and other things. This one, Mayor Doherty deserves it. Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and so moved.
I make a motion to suspend the rules to move item 6A to seventh order for a final vote.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, file the council number 100, 2021, amending file of the council number 36, 2020, amending file of the council number 59, 2019, entitled, and ordinance, amending file of the council number 17, 1994, entitled, and ordinance as amended, authorizing the governing body of the city of Scranton to enact a waste disposal and collection fee for the purpose of raising revenue to cover the waste disposal and collection costs incurred by the city of Scranton for the disposal of refuse by maintaining the waste disposal and collection fee of $300 for calendar year 2022, and the same shall remain in full force and effect annually thereafter.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, file the council number 101, 2021, amending file of the council number 62, 2019, amending file of the council number 58, 2016, as amended, entitled, establishing a registration program for residential rental properties, requiring all owners of residential rental properties to designate a property manager for service of process and prescribing duties of owners, property managers, and occupants by maintaining the rental registration fee of $45 for calendar year 2022, and the same shall remain in full force and effect annually thereafter.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, file the council number 102, 2021, amending file of the council number 35, 2020, and ordinance as amended, entitled, general city operating budget 2021 by transferring $30,000 from account number as noted, non-departmental expenditures contingency, to account number as noted, city council professional services, in the amount of $27,247.80, and account number as noted, city council advertising, in the amount of $2,752.20.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, file the council number 103, 2021, adopting the investment policy for the city of Scranton attached heretofore and marked Exhibit A.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
On the question? On the question, we'll give Mayor Cognetti and her administration credit with this piece of legislation and the next. We've been waiting a very long time through two administrations for an investment policy and a fund balance policy. It's one of the last two recommendations from the Act 47 exit plan, so I was very pleased to see this, it was very well-written, so I thank them for that. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
7E, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, file the council number 104, 2021, adopting the fund balance policy for the city of Scranton attached heretofore and marked as Exhibit A.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7E.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7E legally and lawfully adopted.
7F, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, file the council number 105, 2021, amending file of council number 72, 2019, and ordinance, amending file of council number 64 of 2014, entitled, and ordinance adopting the quality of life and violation ticket process in the city of Scranton as amended, to amend violations in Section 2, enforcement in Section 4, fines and penalties in Section 5, fines and penalties in Section 6, and citation fines in Section 7.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7F.
Second.
On the question? On the question?
Yes, on the question. I have a few points that I'd like to make about this legislation. Our city has a problem with light. It's something that I've noticed for a long time, and it's one of the reasons that I wanted to run for council in the first place, to help us to fight light. We, you know, I think that we have an amazing city, I love it, I love living here, and I want other people to do the same and to be proud of their city. And I think in order to do that, we need to, we need to help correct our appearance, we need to address the issues with landlords and homeowners who do not care about their properties or their rentals, people who live out of town or out of state and, you know, just don't keep up with their properties. And that's why we have a quality of life ordinance to help to address those issues, and we know that it has not been working, and I feel that since I've been on council, I've been working And I feel that since I've been on council, I've been working alongside of OECD and our Lips Department so that we can help to correct that process. And I think that there's still, certainly is work to be done. This is one of the things to come out of those conversations is this piece of legislation. I think that it was a mistake when, when the fines were lowered before my time on council, and you can see on the website, it's actually on the homepage, there's a quality of life workflow that they have posted now, and to my knowledge, they've been adhering to that workflow. Once a complaint is received, it then gets forwarded to, to the code enforcement supervisor, and then is assigned to a housing inspector. The housing inspector will then take a look at the property, see if the complaint is valid, and they will take photos and leave a door tag if the complaint is valid. Also, now with the addition of OpenGov, there have been a lot of improvements, and this information is being entered into OpenGov and is a lot easier for them to track. Then, within one to three days, the housing inspector will then recheck the property. If it's not resolved, if the person hasn't, you know, say, cut the grass, if that was the issue, then they'll send a certified violation letter to the owner. So this is two chances, two opportunities that they have to, to correct the issue. Then, the housing inspector will recheck the property. If it's not resolved, they'll issue the ticket. Currently, it's set at $25. Then it could be escalated to $50. And that's, that's within seven days of the previous step. And then, within 10 days, the housing inspector will once again go out to see if it's been resolved. If not, they can file a citation with the magistrate, which could be up to a $1,000 fine. The magistrate is sometimes where we've been getting stuck with these. So once people still have not paid the fines, then getting, getting a hearing and, you know, getting, getting the person there, that's been part of the issue. But I, you know, I don't think that it's been any more improved in terms of getting people to pay the fines, and it's not so that we could make money off of, off of the residents so that people could be more compliant and take us seriously in getting the issues resolved. And I, you know, don't feel that, that has changed, and I feel that it's been long enough, the two years since, since that had been passed and the fine was lowered. So, this ordinance here will increase it to $100, and then there will be late fees, so 10% in addition to that cost for every week that it's late, up to 10 weeks. And, you know, I think that we need to hold people accountable. And if there's, if there's an issue with, with addressing the problem that, you know, say, the resident or homeowner is having, then I think there's room for that discussion at the city, and then we can, we can work from there. But if not, and then if we repeatedly get ignored and doesn't, doesn't get resolved, then that's when these next steps need to be taken. And I did just want to provide as a resource, too, and this was something that was started this year. NeighborWorks had started this mobile toolkit. So, this is something, if there's like a neighborhood cleanup or a project, or if you need supplies to, to get something done, that you could contact NeighborWorks, and they can, they can set up a date to bring this mobile toolkit near, near property, and then you can utilize it. So there's a lot of different tools. There's, you know, there's lawnmower, there's shovels. They had done that over the fall time, and then I think they're taking reservations for February 2022. So I just wanted to make sure that the public was aware of that. And I believe that's, that's all that I have on, on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question?
On the question, real quick. So, it seems to me that it doesn't matter whether, what the fines are. We're still having the issue of it getting thrown out, those issues getting thrown out at the magistrate level. So realistically, it all comes down to documenting what you're putting out there. Because if you're not documenting it, and you're not building a case, by the time you get to the magistrate, they're just going to throw it out anyway. So, to me, it doesn't really matter what the fines are. It's about compliance and deterrence, and I think a higher fine is a greater deterrent. So I will be voting for this. But that, that doesn't mean I don't think that, you know, the previous administration, I think it was under Wayne Evans when we got the, the legislation dropping the fines. That doesn't mean that they were wrong. That doesn't mean that, it, we have to get the process right at the beginning in documenting it and tracking that workflow.
Anyone else?
Yes, on the question. So, it seems as if there's been improvements that have been made to department, whether it be workflow, whether it be the addition of OpenGov. And the one thing I think is going to really help is the addition of the solicitor that's going to be in that department now. In 2019, there was issues that were going on, and council decided to lower that fee for the reasons that were occurring at the time. And at this time, I don't know if the answer is to increase the punishment on the resident. I do think the workflow, the website of OpenGov, and also the solicitor will help with the enforcement of this. It's basically what I've heard from the residents when I speak to them, when they call me with a complaint, and this process occurs. When those things are occurring, the problem is usually taken care of. When that process breaks down, is normally when I get the call back that nothing is, nothing is occurring and nothing is happening. I'm a person that likes to systematically go through things. I do think with these changes that have already occurred, going into next year, I think we're going to see some more help with this. But I'll be voting no on this just due to the fact that we're increasing the, the fines.
Anyone else?
Yes. So, I think it's premature. So whenever you make change or implement something new, you should take a three-year analysis, not two. Three's always a better number. I would, and also, I'd like to see, in the third year, the impact of OpenGov, which is a great tool, I'm thrilled to have it, and I'd also like to see the impact of a solicitor dedicated to code enforcement. I'd like to see this process evolve one more year before raising, raising the fees. So that is why I'll be voting no.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
No.
Mr. McAndrew?
No.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Gaw.
Yes, I hereby declare item 7F legally and lawfully adopted.
7G, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, resolution number 238, 2021, authorizing the filing of a proposal for Keystone Elm Street program designation with the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for the Pine Brook Neighborhood Revitalization.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7G.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, there always seems to be some unfounded criticism out there that the city only concentrates on the downtown and neglects its neighborhoods. I think this legislation is another example of the city's commitment into our neighborhoods. I had the pleasure of serving on the steering committee for the, for this neighborhood plan alongside representatives from Guyson Air Commonwealth School of Medicine, Lackawanna College, NeighborWorks, United Neighborhood Centers, the PA Department of Community and Economic Development, the Lackawanna River Conservation Authority, Chamber of Commerce, as well as residents and business owners from the Pine Brook neighborhood. This steering committee was organized back in the fall of 2019. We'd worked through COVID, then dealt with those issues, and that was harder when we were going out, trying to collect data from the neighborhood. But it's a great example of a public-private partnership that looked at an underutilized section of our city and put together a plan to build this neighborhood back up to what it once was, which is a vibrant mixed-use neighborhood that includes residential, commercial corridors, as well as future plans now for investments into the recreational areas that Pine Brook has to offer, such as Sweeney Beach, Chick Feldman Field, and the Pen Ridge Complex. And I just think it's a good program for that neighborhood.
Thank you. Anyone else?
On the question, I agree. I'm happy to see what's been happening over in the Pine Brook neighborhood. I think there's improvements that are being made. I was happy to see the capacity pool being taken down just a few weeks ago, and I'm sure that something great will be put in its place. But yeah, so I will be voting yes for this. I think I'd be glad if they could get the Keystone Elm Street designation.
Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Gaw.
Yes, I hereby declare item 7G legally and lawfully adopted.
7H, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, resolution number 239, 2021, appointment of Terry Millard, 1618 Olive Streets, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18510, as a member of the Scranton Municipal Recreation Authority, effective November 23, 2021. Ms. Millard will fill the unexpired term of Robert Shoemaker, who resigned on August 31, 2021. The term of Ms. Millard will expire on December 31, 2022.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7H.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I'd just like to thank Mr. Shoemaker, and welcome Ms. Millard.
Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Gaw.
Yes, I hereby declare item 7H legally and lawfully adopted.
7I, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, resolution number 240, 2021, reappointment of Michael Muller, 830 Taylor Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18510, as a member of the Historical Architecture Review Board. The term of Michael Muller on the Historical Architectural Review Board expired on October 11, 2021, and was held over until November 18, 2021. His new five-year term will expire on October 11, 2026.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7I.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Gaw.
Yes, I hereby declare item 7I legally and lawfully adopted.
7J, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, resolution number 241, 2021, appointment of Harry V. McKay Jr., 529 Bogart Place, Apartment 205, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18503, to serve as a member of the City of Scranton Ethics Board. Mr. McKay will be replacing Andrew Heller, who resigned on August 31, 2021. The three-year term of Mr. McKay will expire on November 24, 2024.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7J.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I'd also like to thank Mr. Heller, and welcome Mr. McKay.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Gaw.
Yes, I hereby declare item 7J legally and lawfully adopted.
7K, for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, resolution number 242, 2021, accepting a donation from Brayers Towing located at 1013 Ferdinand Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, for the use of two portable light stands used to illuminate the Kaiser Valley Community Center parking lot in Weston Field for polling purposes on November 2, 2021, election day.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7K.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Gaw.
Yes, I hereby declare item 7K legally and lawfully adopted.
7L, for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, resolution number 243, 2021, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton to enter into an agreement with the Department of Homeland Security, FEMA, in the amount of $42,857.14, to be utilized by the Scranton Fire Department for the installation of smoke and carbon monoxide detectors.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7L.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Gaw.
Yes, I hereby declare item 7L legally and lawfully adopted.
7M, formerly 6A, for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption, file the council number 106, 2021, authorizing the naming of a new pocket park located at 248 Wyoming Avenue in honor of former Mayor Christopher A. Doherty.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7M.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunningham?
Yes.
And Mr. Gaw.
Yes, I hereby declare item 7M legally and lawfully adopted.
7N, previously tabled, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption, file the council number 95, 2021, repealing file of the council number 147, 1986, entitled, "An Ordnance Providing for the General Revenue by Imposing a Tax at the Rate of Two Mills Upon the Privilege of Operating or Conducting Business in the City of Scranton, as Measured by the Gross Receipts Therefrom, Requiring Registration and Payment of the Tax as Condition to the Conducting of Such Business, Providing for the Levy and Collection of Such Tax, Prescribing Such Requirements for Returns and Records, Conferring Powers and Duties upon the Tax Collector, and Imposing Penalties," and file of council number 98, 1976, as amended, "and imposing a mercantile license tax of two mills for the year 1987, and annually thereafter upon persons engaging in certain occupations and businesses therein, providing for its levy and collection, and for the issuance of mercantile licenses, conferring and imposing powers and duties upon the tax collector of the city of Scranton, and imposing penalties effective January 1, 1987, and adopting an ordinance for the general revenue by imposing a payroll tax on the amount of payroll expense generated as a result of a business, conducting business activity within the city, and to be levied at a rate of 0.2787 percent, requiring registration and payment of the tax as condition to the conducting of such business, providing for the levy and collection of such tax, prescribing such requirements for returns and records, conferring powers and duties upon the tax collector, and imposing penalties."
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7N.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I'm not going to rehash my comments from a couple weeks ago regarding the school district's unwillingness to make this change at this time, but I do want to reiterate my position that I do not believe this is a perfect option, but it is the only option we have at the moment. From the city's point of view, we either make this conversion now, or we lose the ability to do so in January, when we exit Act 47. And all, and then although I'd prefer for the school district to make this conversion along with us, especially for the sake of the business community, who will now have to pay two separate taxes, I still believe it's in the best interest of city residents and taxpayers that we move forward with this conversion on our own. Hopefully, the new school board will come to their senses, and I think I just saw in The Times that the state is providing them the gap funding that they were worried about, that $1.2 million. But hopefully, they come to their senses and make this conversion, either in amended budget for 2022 or in their 2023 budget, which they will still have the ability to do moving forward, even though the city loses its ability to change. But basically, I support this conversion because the business privilege of mercantile taxes have been able, labeled as nuisance taxes by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania since the late 80s, and can't even be levied any longer. There's very limited organic growth in either business privilege or mercantile, and neither is easily collectible, on top of being a burden on our small business community. Payroll prep tax is a more modern, easily collectible tax. It has greater potential for organic growth. As wages increase, it is easier to verify what is owed. It is spread out to cover all businesses in the city, and it has to be, it has to be revenue-neutral in year one, and the city also has the ability to readjust the rate after year one to guarantee that it is revenue-neutral. So for those reasons, I will be supporting this legislation.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? On the question, I'm going to be voting for this as well. Obviously, nobody likes any tax, but if there's one theme that I've heard since I've been on council, everyone unanimously hates the business privilege of mercantile tax, all of our small businesses. Never heard one small business person in favor of it. As Councilman Dunningham said, I also believe that this tax will improve collectibility, has the potential to broaden the tax base, and promote the general fairness in taxation. Over 70% of the people voted for it when it went to referendum, so I think it's a no-brainer. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7N legally and lawfully adopted.
7O, previously tabled, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, File the Council Number 88, 2021, authorizing the Mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract between the City of Scranton and Bedrock Technology, aka Keystone Technology Consulting, LLC, to provide information technology management services.
As Chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7O.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I'd like to thank Solicitor Hayes for hammering out the details with regards to the concerns we had with this initial contract.
Thank you. Anyone else? On the question, I'm going to be voting for this, and let me explain why. A few reasons. First of all, right now as it stands, there's no director in the IT department. Any entity that I've seen anywhere with over 500 employees, at this point, has some third-party company helping them run their operations. What concerns me if we don't do this is we have a police department and a fire department that rely heavily today on technology. Obviously, we do not have the wherewithal now to do this on our own, especially with the fact that we don't have a director, and the person that the mayor put in there, in my opinion, is not qualified, does no background in information technology. So while I don't generally like hiring consulting firms and consulting services, this, I think, is needed, otherwise, we'll be looking at a potential disaster moving forward because of the way that this whole thing has been handled. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7O legally and lawfully adopted.
7P, previously tabled, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption, File the Council Number 93, 2021, appropriating funds for the expenses of the city government for the period commencing on the first day of January 2022, to and including December 31, 2022, by the adoption of the general city operating budget for the year 2022.
I would like to make a motion to amend item 7P as follows. Council amendments to the 2022 operating budget under revenue. Number one, amend account number 01.301.30120, real estate taxes, delinquent real estate tax, to increase the dollar amount from $2,312,000 to $4,178,604.73. Number two, amend account number 01.302.30210, landfill refuse fee, delinquent refuse, disposal fees, by increasing the amount from $2,000,000 to $2,500,000. Number three, amend the account number 01.310.31110, local taxes, real estate transfer tax, by increasing the amount from $3,500,000 to $4,500,000. Number four, amend account number 01.320.32120, licenses and permits, building permits, by increasing the amount from $900,000 to $1,000,000. Number five, amend account number 01.320.32460, licenses and permits, third-party plan review, by increasing the amount from $300,62.16 to $500,000. Number six, amend account number 01.350.35130, intergovernmental reimbursement, FEMA payments, FIRE safer grant, by decreasing the amount from $850,000 to $0. Number seven, amend account number 01.380.38891, miscellaneous revenue, cable TV proceeds from refinancing, by decreasing the amount from $3,772,327.50 to $0. Eight, amend account number 01.392.39331, interfund transfers, transfers in from other funds, by decreasing the amount from $7,59,450 to $1,000,000. Number nine, amend account number 01.392.39332, interfund transfers, transfers in from liquid fuels, increasing the amount from $2,339,451 to $3,333,451, three, sorry, $3,333,451. Ten, amend interfund transfers, line item transfers in from ARPA, loss revenue from $0 to $5,134,755. Eleven, starting expenditures in the mayor's office. Amend account number 01.010.00000.4010, office of the mayor's standard salary, by decreasing the amount from $200,000 to $148,217.55. Twelve, amend account number 01.010.0000.4270, office of the mayor, dues and subscriptions, by increasing the amount from $30,000 to $33,000. Borough of police. Thirteen, amend account number 01.011.00071.4010, borough of police standard salary, by increasing the amount from $11,107,869.70 to $11,526,088.45. Fourteen, amend account number 01.011.00071.412, 4112, excuse me, borough of police, health insurance, police union, by decreasing the amount from $6,562,230 to $6,236,327.28. Fifteen, amend account number 01.011.00071.4120, borough of police life disability insurance, by increasing the amount from $150,634 to $165,697. Sixteen, amend account number 01.011.00071.4150, borough of police city pension, by decreasing the amount from $5,230,398 to $5,090,180. Seventeen, amend account number 01.011.0071.4170, borough of police, police education allowance, by increasing the amount from $50,000 to $82,000. Borough of fire, number eighteen, amend account number 01.011.00078.4010, borough of fire standard salary, by decreasing the amount from $11,215,901.88 to $10,743,775.39. Amend, nineteen, amend account number 01.011.00078.4010, borough of fire standard salary, safer, by decreasing the amount from $463,017.60 to $0. Twenty, amend account number 01.011.00078.4080, borough of fire overtime salary, by increasing the amount from $275,600 to $381,600. Twenty-one, amend account number 01.011.00078.4113, borough of fire health insurance, FIRE union, by decreasing the amount from $5,995,028 to $5,899,900, 5,899,962.68. Twenty-two, amend account number 01.011.0078.4120, borough of fire life disability insurance, by increasing the amount from $141,000.521 to $155,925. Number twenty-three, amend account number 01.011.00078.4140, borough of fire city 10% early retirement, by decreasing the amount from $100,000 to $90,000. Twenty-four, amend account number 01.011.00078.4150, borough of fire city pension, by decreasing the amount from $9,604,326 to $9,129,293. Twenty-five, amend account number 01.011.00078.4201, borough of fire professional services, by increasing the amount from $30,000 to $92,700. Twenty-six, amend account number 01.011.00078.4270, borough of fire dues and subscriptions, by increasing the amount from $0 to $24,420. Twenty-seven, amend account number 01.011.00078.4390, borough of fire materials and supplies, by increasing the amount from $8,000 to $56,914. You have some time, Mark. Amend account number 01.011.00078.4420, borough of fire, travel and lodging, by increasing the amount from $0 to $3,500. Number twenty-nine, amend account number 01.011.00078.4470, borough of fire, training and certification, by increasing the amount from $101,000 to $167,925. Amend account number, number thirty, amend account number 01.001.00078.4575, borough of fire, maintenance equipment, by increasing the amount from $20,000 to $27,104. Thirty-one, amend account number 01.011.00078.4580, borough of fire, general equipment, by increasing the amount from $40,000 to $145,302. Moving on to the Office of the City Clerk, number thirty-two, amend account number 01.020.0000.4010, Office of the City Clerk standard salary, by decreasing the amount from $279,259.60 to $247,869.7. Thirty-three, amend account number 01.020.0000.4201, Office of City Clerk professional services, by increasing the amount from $52,500 to $70,000. Thirty-four, amend account number, amend account number 01.020.0000.4250, Office of the City Clerk advertising, by increasing the amount from $27,500 to $32,000. City Controller, number thirty-five, amend account number 01.030.0000.4010, City Controller standard salary, by decreasing the amount from $284,252.68 to $268,986.39. Business Administration, number thirty-six, amend account number 01.040.00040.4010, BA standard salary, by decreasing the amount from $542,150.67 to $423,179.95. Thirty-seven, amend account number 01.040.00040.4116, BA health insurance clerical, by decreasing the amount from $1,617,610 to $1,503,481.56. Number thirty-eight, amend account number 01.040.00040.4117, BA health insurance, non-union, by increasing the amount from $1,471,624 to $1,621,90.92. Thirty-nine, amend account number 01.040.00040.4150, BA city pension, by decreasing the amount from $652,217 to $621,700. Amend, number forty, amend account number 01.040.00040.4190, BA unemployment insurance, by decreasing the amount from $250,000 to $100,000. Forty-one, amend account number 01.040.00040.4201, BA professional services, by increasing the amount from $221,400 to $500,000. Amend account number 01.040.00040.4250, BA advertising, by increasing the amount from $22,500 to $30,000. Forty-three, amend account number 01.040.00040.4270, BA dues and subscriptions, by increasing the amount from $600 to $1,000. Forty-four, amend account number 01.040.00040.4390, BA materials and supplies, by increasing the amount from $500 to $1,000. Forty-five, amend account number 01.040.00040.4470, BA training and certification, by increasing the amount from $0 to $500. Forty-six, amend account number 01.040.00040.6009, BA operating transfers, workers' comp, by increasing the amount from $2,955,129 to $3,13,363. Forty-seven, amend account number 01.040.00040.6024, BA bank fees, by increasing the amount from $0 to $30,000. Under Human Resources, number forty-eight, amend account number 01.040.00041.4010, HR standard salary, by decreasing the amount from $295,18.14 to $283,30,30.74. Forty-nine, amend account number 01.040.00041.4040, HR other salary, by decreasing the amount from $250,000 to $110,000. Number fifty, amend account number 01.040.00041.4201, HR professional services, by increasing the amount from $250,000 to $500,000. Fifty-one, amend account number 01.040.00041.4470. HR Training and Certification by decreasing the amount from sixty thousand dollars to twenty-five thousand dollars. Fifty-two, amend account number zero one point zero-four-zero point zero 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 four-one point four-six-three-zero. HR Liability Casualty Insurance by increasing the amount from one million, one hundred thousand to one million, four hundred thousand. Fifty-three, amend account number zero one point, zero-four-zero point zero 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 four-one point six-zero-zero-six. HR Personnel Cost Adjustment by decreasing the amount from ten thousand dollars to five thousand dollars. Under Information Technology, fifty-four, amend account number zero one point zero-four-zero point zero 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 four-two point four-zero-one-zero. IT Standard Salary by decreasing the amount from two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars to two hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars. Under Borough of Treasury, amend account number zero one point zero-four-zero point zero 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 four-three point four-zero-one-zero. Treasury Standard Salary by decreasing the amount from a hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars to a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-six cents. Number fifty-six, amend account number zero one point zero-four-zero point zero 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 four-three point four-zero-seven-zero. Treasury Longevity Salary by decreasing the amount from three thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars to zero dollars. Fifty-seven, under OECD, amend account number five zero point zero 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 point four-zero-one-zero. OECD Standard Salary by increasing the amount from forty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-four cents to eight hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents. This is a non-addition to the general fund budget. Licensing, Inspections and Permits Code Enforcement, number fifty-eight, amend account number zero one point zero-five-one point zero 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 five-one point four-zero-one-zero. LIP Standard Salary by increasing the amount from seven hundred, seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars and eighty-seven cents to seven, seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five ninety-eight and eighty-seven cents. Fifty-nine, amend account number zero one point zero-five-one point zero 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 five-one point four-zero-eight-zero. LIP Overtime Salary by increasing the amount from five hundred dollars to twenty-five hundred dollars. Number sixty, amend account number zero one point zero-five-one point zero 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 five-one point four-one-zero-one. LIP Uniform Allowance by increasing the amount from eleven thousand, one hundred dollars to twelve thousand, six hundred dollars. Number sixty-one, amend account number zero one point zero-five-one point zero 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 five-one point four-two-zero-one. LIP Professional Services by increasing the amount from thirty thousand to fifty thousand dollars. Number sixty-two, amend account number zero one point zero-five-one point zero 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 five-one point four-two-seven-zero. LIP Dues and Subscriptions by increasing the amount from zero dollars to one thousand dollars. Number sixty-three, amend account number zero one point zero-five-one point zero 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 five-one point four-two-nine-zero. LIP Stationary Office Supplies by increasing the amount from five hundred dollars to one thousand, five hundred dollars. Sixty-four, amend account number zero one point zero-five-one point zero 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 five-one point four-three-nine-zero. LIP Materials and Supplies by increasing the amount from a hundred dollars to three thousand dollars. Sixty-five, amend account number zero one point zero-five-one point zero 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 five-one point two, four-four-two-zero. LIP Travel and Lodging by increasing the amount from zero dollars to one thousand dollars. Sixty-six, amend account number zero one point zero-five-one point zero 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 five-one point four-four-seven-zero. LIP Training and Certification by increasing the amount from zero, zero dollars to twelve thousand dollars. Sixty-seven, amend account number zero one point zero-five-one point zero 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 five-one point four-five-five-zero. LIP Capital Expenditures by increasing the amount from zero dollars to twenty thousand dollars. Under LIP Bureau of Buildings, amend account num-, number sixty-eight, amend account number zero one point zero-five-one point zero 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 eight-two point four-zero-one-zero. LIP Borough of Buildings Standard Salary by increasing the amount from a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty-five cents to a hundred and thirty-four thousand, seventeen dollars and fifty-one cents. Sixty-nine, amend account number zero one point zero-five-one point zero 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 eight-two point, dot four-zero-eight-zero. LIP Borough of Buildings Overtime Salary by increasing the amount from one thousand to one thousand, five hundred dollars. Number seventy, amend account number zero one point zero-five-one point zero 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 eight-two point four-two-zero-one. LIP Borough of Buildings Professional Services by decreasing the amount from twenty thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars. Number seventy-one, amend account number zero one point zero-five-one point zero 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 eight-two point four-four-four-seven. LIP Borough of Buildings UGI Gas by increasing the amount from a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Number seventy-two, amend account number zero one point zero-five-one point zero 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 eight-two point four-four-four-eight. LIP Borough of Buildings PAWC Water by decreasing the amount from four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Number seventy-three, amend account number zero one point zero-five-one point zero 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 eight-two point four-four-five-zero. LIP Borough of Buildings Electrical by increasing the amount from a hundred and fifty thousand to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Number seventy-four, amend account number zero one point zero-five-one point zero 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 eight-two point four-four-six-five. LIP Borough of Buildings Building Supplies by decreasing the amount from seven hundred and fifty dollars to zero dollars. Under the Law Department, seventy, number seventy-five, amend account number zero one point zero-six-zero point zero 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 point four-zero-one-zero. Law Standard Salary by decreasing the amount from four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars to four hundred and two thousand, seventy-five dollars. Seventy-six, amend account number zero one point zero-six-zero point zero 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 point four-two-zero-one. Law Professional Services by increasing the amount from three hundred thousand dollars to five hundred thousand dollars. Under DPW Borough of Administration, number seventy-seven, amend account number zero one point zero-eight-zero point zero 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 eight-zero point four-zero-one-zero. DPW Borough of Administration Standard Salary by decreasing the amount from two hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents to two hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-seven cents. Number seventy-eight, amend account number zero one point zero-eight-zero point zero 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 eight-zero point four-one-one-eight. DPW Borough of Administration Health Insurance DPW Union by decreasing the amount from two million, one hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars and ninety-five cents to one million, nine hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, nine hundred, nine hundred and sixty-five, hundred and seventy-two cents. Under DPW Borough of Engineering, amend account number zero one point zero-eight-zero point zero 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 eight-one point four-zero-one-zero. DPW Borough of Engineering Standard Salary by increasing the amount from a hundred and eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars and nine cents to a hundred and eighty-five thousand, hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventeen cents. DPW Borough of Highways, amend account number zero one point zero-eight-zero point zero 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 eight-three point four-zero-one-zero. DPW Borough of Highways Standard Salary by decreasing the amount from one million, four hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and one cent to one million, four hundred and forty-two thousand, thirty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents. Eighty-one, amend account number zero one point zero-eight-zero point zero 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 eight-three point four-five-five-one. DPW Borough of Highways Railway Resurfacing Program by decreasing the amount from one million to eight hundred and fifty thousand. DPW Borough of Refuge, number eighty-two, amend account number zero one point zero-eight-zero point zero 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 eight-four point four-zero-one-zero. DPW Borough of Refuge Standard Salary by decreasing the amount from two million, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-one cents to two million, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty-one cents. Eighty-three, amend account number zero one point zero-eight-zero point zero 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 eight-four point four-five-five-five. DPW Borough of Refuge Recycling by decreasing the amount from one hundred thousand to fifty thousand. DPW Borough of Garages, amend account number zero one point zero-eight-zero point zero 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 eight-five point four-zero-one-zero. DPW Borough of Garages Standard Salary by decreasing the amount from four hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred and three dollars and twenty-three cents to four, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars and twenty-two cents. Under Parks and Recreation, amend account number zero one point one-zero-zero point zero 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 point four-zero-one-zero. Parks, Parks and Recreation Standard Salary by decreasing the amount from six hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred dollars and ninety-three cents to five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, two seventy-five and sixty-two cents. Under the Single Tax Office, amend account number zero one point zero-nine-zero point zero 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 point four-one-one-nine. STO Health Insurance by decreasing the amount from nine hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars to six hundred and nine thousand, one ninety-six, two and twenty-four cents. Under non-departmental expenditures, boards and commissions, nonprofits. Amend account number zero one point four-zero-one point one-five-three-zero-five point four-two-nine-nine. ECTV by de-, by increasing the amount from a hundred and twenty thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Non-departmental expenditures, principal and interest loans. Amend account number four, zero one point four-zero-one point one-five-three one zero point four-two-nine-nine. Non-departmental expenditures, principal and interest loans, debt service, street lighting by increasing the amount from four hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars to four hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifteen cents. Eighty-nine, amend account number zero one point four-zero-one point one-five-three-two-eight point four-two-nine-nine. Non-departmental expenditures, principal and interest loans. Twenty-sixteen Redevelopment Authority Series AA by increasing the amount from eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars, four sixty-two, fifty cents to eight hundred and ninety-one thousand, seventy-five dollars. Number ninety, amend account number zero one point four-zero-one point one-five-three-three-two point four-two-nine-nine. Non-departmental expenditures, principal and interest loans. Series of, of twenty-seventeen General Obligation Refunding by decreasing the amount from three million, two hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars to three million, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Number ninety-one, amend account number zero one point four-zero-one point one-five-three-three-eight point four-two-nine-nine. Non-departmental expenditures, principal and interest loans. Twenty-sixteen Redevelopment Authority Series A by increasing the amount from three million, six hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars to three million, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Nine, number ninety-two, amend account number zero one point four-zero-one point one-five-three-three-nine point four-two-nine-nine. Non-departmental expenditures, principal and interest loans. Series of twenty-sixteen General Obligation Notes by increasing the amount from one million, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand to one million, eight, eight hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred dollars. Under non-departmental expenditures, unpaid bills, court awards miscellaneous. Number ninety-three, amend account number zero one point four-zero-one point one-five-three-zero-eight point four-two-nine-nine. Unpaid Bills, Court Rewards Miscellaneous OECD Contribution by decreasing the amount from sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-four cents to forty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents. Number ninety-four, amend account number zero one point four-zero-one point one-seven-zero-two-zero point four-two-nine-nine. Veterans Organizations by increasing the amount from fifty thousand dollars to one hundred thousand dollars. Number ninety-five, amend account number zero one point four-zero-one point one-seven-one-zero-zero point four-two-nine-nine. Unpaid Bills, Court Rewards Miscellaneous Grant Match by increasing the amount from tw- five hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and one cent to seven, seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Second, if that's it.
How about a hand for Councilman Dunne here, huh? How about that? I, I don't know how he got stuck with this job for the second year in a row, so I, I don't know how that happened, but. That's, that's right.
She could copy and paste.
Oh, okay, there's a motion on the floor. Uh, thank you, Councilman Dunne. And I heard a second, right?
Yes.
There's a second.
Second, second again.
All those in favor of the amendments signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it and so moved. What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item seven P as amended.
Second.
On the question.
So. Someone want to go first?
I'll go first. So on the question, um, I'm very proud of the work that the council and especially President Gahan and Vice President Dunhu put into this. I agree with all the amendments. I know the biggest point, you know, first of all, the, the three percent increase across the board is fair. All right, this is a compromise. This, this budget's a compromise, so that's fair. Um, the other exorbitant raises, I, I was totally against. But I'm going to be short and brief, so I know the biggest point of contention between yesterday's article and today's speakers is the finance, financial director, Director of Finance. And I'm going to tell you why I was not in favor of it, so. And I listen to you guys and I, your points are valid, but, you know, Pell's plan was to exit Act forty-seven and hand the reins over to a competent, experienced business, uh, a BA and his staff. So with that said, you know, we didn't hear a peep out of them recommending a Director of Finan-, Finance till last week. All right, so, and I want to put this in, into perspective, so. Over at the school district, they're in recovery. Same thing as distressed status, same thing, different entity, right? Um, they have a plan, it's a five-year plan, right? Dr. Finan is the Chief Recovery Officer, the equivalent of Pell over there. So at the end of five years with, you know, hopefully solvency, they're not going to recommend to hire someone to replace her when she leaves. She's going to hand the reins over, and I think Pell should have done the same thing here. So that's my rationale, um, and I appreciate it yours, and that is all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So it's to, to go off mark here, um, you know, the biggest point of contention is this position of Director of Finance, and when I look at the BA's office, we have the Business Administrator, we have the Finance Manager, we have the Staff Accountant, Special Assistant Assistant and a Finan-, Financial Analyst. Some of the concerns I raised months ago when looking at this position are the same exact things that are occurring right now and through this budget process. I raised those concerns then and, uh, I think if we're going to fully utilize these people in this office, the staff is there to do it. We just have to, uh, we have to get to work in that office.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, uh, on the question, uh, first I'd, I'd like to say that I appreciate the work that, uh, my fellow council members, uh, particularly Councilman Gahan and, um, Councilman Dunne have, have done on uh, this budget and the amendments, um, all the time spent over spreadsheets, uh, making sure that every number is correct. Um, it's incredibly tedious work, uh, and we know that this, this process has been messy and has not gone the way that we've wanted to, as has been reiterated, um, several times, but, um, you know, ultimately this balance, or this budget is sound and balanced and, um, I'm voting for it as a whole. Uh, I am happy to see that we've, we've increased some raises, uh, to the positions, the three percent for many non-union positions, but then also some of the market-based, uh, increases to department heads. Uh, we know that our, our salaries are, are far behind, um, many other cities in our state that are of our size. Um, and so I do believe that we need to, uh, work on, on catching up. And, uh, with regards to the Director of Finance position, that is, uh, something that I would have liked to have kept in there. Um, yeah, I am, I wouldn't say nervous coming out of distressed status, but, uh, still, it, we're not where we, we want to be just yet. I mean, we're to the point where we, we don't need, um, to be under Act forty-seven anymore, but uh, as a city. city, we still have a lot of work to do, and I felt that that position would give us the extra bandwidth to be able to do that. So, I am disappointed that it's not in our amended budget, but I think that there are some options in the future, as I've heard that we could possibly fund that position. So, I'll look forward to possibly that, and I will be voting for this budget tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Donahue?
So, given all the amendments I just had to read, I don't think I need to harp on this year's budget process because we all know we have to do better moving forward. And we will be having discussions with the administration beginning in the new year about how to improve this process so we don't run into the same issues that we dealt with both this year and last. In terms of what's in front of us at the moment, I think it's safe to say that neither myself, my fellow colleagues, or the administration are 100% happy with this budget in its entirety. But that's how compromise works. No one gets all that they want, and there has to be some give and take. And that's exactly what this budget is, I believe, is a compromised budget. Personally, I would have liked to see the Director of Finance position be included in this budget. I would have liked to see more resources included that allow the city to better monitor pave cuts and quality of life issues. But given the fact that there's four separate contracts expiring at the end of this year that are still not resolved, questions surrounding the delinquent real estate tax collection number, and the desire by both council and the administration to keep tax rates steady, this budget basically comes down to a product of what we need to continue to provide essential services while beginning to move the city government in a more positive direction by modernizing city government operations. So, I'll be voting for this budget because I do believe it is a small step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I give my comments on the budget, I just, everyone here painfully had to sit through the reading of 95 amendments. I just want to make one point clear. This is not normal by any stretch of the imagination. No matter what the mayor says, no matter what the business administrator says, this year and last year were the most abnormal years in terms of a budget process that I've ever seen in eight years since I've been on council. So, I just want to make sure that the public understands that. This isn't like the administration said, hey, let's get together and let's change the budget and let's all kumbaya. This was a disaster of epic proportion. I've never seen anything like it. And I know I've said that before in the last few weeks, but I want to make sure that the public understands that because it was such a disaster. It was such a mess. And as you sat here through those 95 amendments that Councilman Donahue had to make, I hope everyone understands that in a normal year, there's never going to be 95 amendments of the budget, not even close, not even close. Now, the Java City Council, in my view, is one of a watchdog. We represent the people, we represent you and your hard-earned tax dollars, and we ensure that those funds are spent properly and they are spent wisely. This year, I'm proud to say that this council did its job on behalf of the people of our city. When we were faced with a budget presented by the mayor and the business administrator for the second year in a row that was littered with errors, inaccuracies, and omissions, we stepped up. We identified the mistakes and we fixed them. As I've stated here numerous times the past few weeks, the budget process the mayor and business administrator have employed, not just this year, but also last year, has left an awful lot to be desired. It was sloppy and it was careless, as evidenced by the 95 amendments that we had to make. Now, I say this not to belabor the point, not to continue to needle the administration over their clear incompetence in this matter or to be negative, but to tell the truth, which is what I was elected to do, and it's what I've done for the last eight years. If I didn't point these things out and if we didn't make this public, then how would any of you know what was going on? These are your tax dollars. You should know what goes on in this building. How would this process and future budgets get any better? Now, last year, if you remember, I sat here, or actually, we were at that point, we're on Zoom because of the pandemic, and I made several suggestions and warnings that the process was not being followed the way that most council people are used to. Obviously, they went completely unheeded, which left me with no other choice than to this year say almost the exact same thing, except this year maybe a little bit more forcefully. I won't be here next year, obviously, I've stated that before, but for the love of God, make sure the numbers are correct. And this nonsense that's coming out of the administration that, oh, there were some columns that didn't transfer over, and there was some numbers that didn't add up, and we recalculated projections, that is just garbage. That is garbage. If they had just taken responsibility for it from the beginning, I might have given them a little bit more credit. But the memo that was issued and this, you know, narrative that's coming out that's trying to spin this thing as if it's some kind of normal, everyday occurrence is just very, very frustrating. Now, even though I'm confident in the budget that we will vote on tonight, I still have some concerns that I'll get to in a minute. The budget that we presented, though, tonight did a few things. It eliminated unnecessary and in some cases redundant positions. It scaled back gigantic increases for employees to a more manageable level, which was a theme last year, and the mayor apparently did not get the memo. And we tried to make revenue projections as conservative as we could in the face of conflicting information. The budget the mayor originally proposed and the one that we will vote on tonight has been decreased by nearly a million dollars. With the decreases in salaries, the elimination of positions, and other moves that we've made here tonight, we've saved almost half a million dollars. Now, this is important because we should be running our city like all of you run your households, watching every penny, saving where we can, and not spending unnecessarily where there will be no added value or benefit. Now, one of the concerns that's been raised tonight and that I read about in the newspaper is this addition of the Director of Finance, which, to be quite honest with all of you, has me completely puzzled. The mayor's comments in the newspaper today regarding this position of Finance Director, where she stated that she was disappointed council cut the position, called it extremely important, giving our impending exit from state Act 47 oversight. And she also stated that if we don't reverse course, she will try to secure private funding for a Finance Director, arguing that it's a position we just simply have to have. Well, let's take a look, actually, at the facts. First of all, we do not need this position, which is why it is eliminated from this budget. The Director of Finance is the business administrator. That's why we have a business administrator. That is his job. By the way, as Councilman Schuster pointed out, we also have a Finance Manager who has the title of Assistant BA. We have staff accountants, we have other employees in the BA's department. We create a Finance Director position, people in that office are going to be tripping over each other. That would be like if I proposed in this budget creating a Director of Council, even though we have a city clerk. What would the city clerk do? They're both doing the same position. It does not make any sense. Before we start adding positions, and this position would have paid $80,000, let's make sure that we have people in these positions that are already qualified and know how to do the job. And I have to be completely honest, after going through this process, I have concerns that the business administrator is not qualified for the position that he is in. And one of the hallmarks of leadership is to admit when you're wrong. A few months ago, I sat up here and listened to Councilman Schuster and Councilman McAndrew state very eloquently that they voted against Mr. West because they stated that they were concerned about his qualifications. I gave the mayor the benefit of the doubt then because the mayor should have the ability to fill her staff with people who she sees fit. I made a mistake. After going through, this budget is clear that we need a new business administrator that has a financial background. The position is just too important, just too important. So, I do think moving forward next year, the mayor needs to make a change there. Otherwise, we may run the risk of running into this problem next year. And the Director of Finance position is redundant. We do not need it. I'm also very concerned that the mayor stated in the newspaper that she would secure private funding for the Finance Director position. This is a complete circum, she's completely trying to circumvent, again, council's role. So, you don't, we clearly do not want this position, the majority of us do not want this position in the budget. So, the mayor's answer is, well, I'm going to go to outside private donors to fund it. That is complete nonsense. Who will this person then answer to? The private donors or council and the public through your tax dollars? I would not be in favor of that, and I do think that it's something next year's council will have to watch very closely. We saw the same thing, there's a pattern here, the same thing that the mayor did in the IT department. We clearly, five of us, voted against Mr. Dealey to be the IT Director. What did the mayor do? She put him in that office anyways. And I believe that's one of the reasons we have to hire an outside consulting firm to make sure that that department is run correctly because Mr. Dealey is not qualified or was not qualified to be the IT Director. So, these are crucial positions. We need to make sure that, the mayor needs to make sure that we're putting qualified people in them, okay? Mr. West seems like a nice enough guy, but he's as qualified to be the business administrator as I am to be an astronaut and fly a spaceship to the moon. It doesn't add up. And again, I don't say that lightly. I literally witnessed mistake after mistake after mistake after mistake, 95 corrections to a budget where, I mean, if you look, we have a lot of budgets to look back at. It's not like we were recreating the wheel here and this was all being made up on the fly. So, that's my concern, and I need to state it here because I'm afraid that if we don't, it's going to happen again next year. Maybe not to this extent because we've raised the red flag and sounded the alarm for the second year in a row, but something's got to give here. And this nonsense that Pell also recommends the position, well, that's nice. Pell has recommended a lot of things in the past, like going to the State Supreme Court against the unions. How did that end up? We had a $30 million judgment. So, let's hire qualified people, let's make sure they do their job, and we should be okay. We do not need new positions if we do, where we do not hire qualified people to make up for that. Does not make any sense. Overall, though, I'm pleased that we're able to present this budget to the public. Doesn't raise taxes, it's financially sound and balanced, it eliminates unnecessary positions, scales back major pay raises, and provides more help in our park system and our D P W. Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7P as amended legally and lawfully adopted.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city clerk to place a legal notice in the newspaper to cancel the two remaining meetings of 2021 on December 21st and 28th.
A second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to authorize the city clerk to place a legal notice in the paper to cancel the two remaining regular meetings in 2021. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
I would also like to make a motion to cancel the public meeting, which was tentatively scheduled for tomorrow, December 15th, 2021, to address any outstanding issues relating to the 2022 budget.
There's a motion on the floor and a second for the city clerk to cancel the public meeting, which was tentatively scheduled for tomorrow, December 15th, 2021. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.